This meeting of the City of Eureka Springs City Council, come to order. Uh, correct the call rule, please.
David Mitchell?
Here.
Terry McLenn?
Here.
Joyce Zeller?
Here.
James DeVito?
Here.
Dee Perkypile?
Here.
Mickey Snyder?
Here.
We have six.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of the flag.
No.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, brings us up to approval of the agenda.
Approved.
Second. I'd like to move, uh, Lonnie from the very last number six under new business to authority report so he can go ahead and give your system update. There's no need for him to wait and have to drive.
Second half.
From here two hours. Mr. Snyder?
I'd like to move new business number three up to unfinished right before the discussion on Rock Street.
You want to make it number two, you mean?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anybody else? Not? Motion to approve the agenda is amended?
So, whoa.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign. opposed? Okay. Agenda is approved. Um, moves this to approval of the minutes from March the 10th.
Moved to approve.
2014.
Second.
Changes, deletions, corrections? None? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's next to be, uh, minutes for the special meeting on 3/13 to 14.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Changes, deletions, corrections? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it disapproved, same sign. Moves this commission committee authority reports, expired terms. Uh, first order of business, I guess you have a application for position number five under HTC for Mr. Stephen Hatfield, and Mr. Hatfield is here, so you can see his face, and he can see your face. Uh, he was brave, out of kind enough to come in and, uh, apply for this position.
You want to point him out?
He's Mr. Hatfield.
Oh, okay.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, I was gonna say, my husband's a Hatfield.
Yeah. Did I miss?
It's automatic.
Did I say it wrong? My bad. Hold the field, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, I stand corrected. Hold the field.
Since he's here, can we talk to him?
Uh, no. Can't do that.
Then why is he here?
Huh?
Then why is he here?
To get familiar with you guys.
Oh.
I mean, you can talk to him after the meeting if you want to, or anytime, but right now it's not the appropriate time, I don't believe, unless, unless you feel like it.
I just want to know how long you've lived here.
A little over a year, a year and a seventh.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So you have time to, uh, from between now and the next meeting to go ahead and produce his, uh, application. All right, and you're welcome to stay if you want to stay. Okay. Next will be, uh, Lonnie Clark with the finance system update.
Well, uh, thank you for moving me up on the agenda. I really appreciate that. Uh, as most of you know, we had chosen BSNA Software, which is out of Bath, Michigan, and, um, the way they started the progress, they sent a team down here for about three days to analyze our old system, what we were doing, and try to develop a training program and, uh, make notes on what adjustments they needed to make in the standardized programs that they had to fit our needs. And the BSNA, uh, they have about 600 municipalities, uh, around the country, so they have, uh, we're, I guess, the fourth one in Arkansas thus far. They have Jacksonville, City of Lowell, Bethel Heights, which is a very small one, and us, so, and, uh, North Little Rock, Hot Springs, and Fayetteville, I think, are all looking at their programs also. So, anyway, just to give you a little background, they sent the, the team down here, which was two or three people, went through all the departments and so forth, and they designed a training program, and they started off with, we began the training with accounts payable and payroll. And they sent one trainer here for, he was here about, oh, 10 to 14 days, I guess, and, excuse me, did the training in, uh, this area. And, uh, this, the accounts payable and payroll are really, they're really working good, and we don't have any kind of issues, uh, with the exception of maybe a little glitch that'll pop up occasionally, something that didn't convert properly or whatever, but for the most part, these are working really good. Uh, cash receiving is working really well, uh, also, and, uh, everything in those three, uh, modules seems to be really on, on target. Uh, the business licensing, our first problem there was the conversion from our old system to our new system. And you have to remember that we went from a DOS-based system to, where you couldn't even use your mouse or anything, which goes way back, and up to a state-of-the-art program. And so, the old data that we tried to convert, a lot of it didn't convert, and so we're having to manually enter that, uh, and I don't know, uh, seems like there's around 1,000, 800, business licenses. Ms. Clark, is that correct?
860.
Okay. And we're getting down to the end, uh, of, of entering those, and, but it's been quite a chore. In the building department, uh, which Bobby Ray, the, the, uh, building, uh, inspector, everything's working pretty good there, with the exception of, there needs to be some communication between the business licensing and the building department for obvious reasons of certificates of occupancy and so on and so forth. Now, I have to say that Eureka Springs, like, I guess, in a lot of other areas, we have some unique situations here that, uh, they don't find, uh, in a lot of other places. So, but at any rate, we're even taking our people, like Carrie, who is the, uh, as you all know, the receptionist, does the business licensing, she and Bobby have worked together, and they have kind of solved this communication problem on who does what and who prints what and so on and so forth. So, some of that, we're able to solve in-house. Um, then we come down to the utility building, which, uh, was delayed considerably because the handheld units that we had previously were just for the program that we're using at that time, not compatible with any other program. As a matter of fact, we ordered them through the company that, uh, provided the software. So, we had to research, Dwayne did this, Public Works Director, uh, and worked with BSNA to get new handheld units, which was quite a lengthy process, it was about three months, I believe, before they could ever actually get the units in, and then the guys had to be trained on them and so forth. So we had a delay there. Um, and, uh, again, we had some conversion issues, so some of the data that didn't come across like we had thought it would. But at any rate, we're, we're slowly but surely, uh, solving these problems, and, uh, we're gonna have more training coming back. And of course, in the utility building, we had an additional problem in that one lady retired at the first of the year, we hired another one, she wasn't familiar with utility billing, nor the program, but she's doing a really great job, and things are, are working out. Now, to tell you that, you know, we don't have any, any problems at all, I'd be lying to you, because we do, but we're getting, we have BSNA's attention, they're sending people back here in a week or two to do some additional training in some areas, and, uh, so I really think that when we get the program fully implemented, it's gonna be a really great, uh, program, and it will not be, unless there are changes in technology, we'll be able to upgrade this program, and we won't have to go through this anytime in the foreseeable future.
Questions, Mr. Mitchell?
No computer system of the size and scope that you put in would not come with problems. I'm amazed it hasn't been worse.
Well, let me just say this in response to what you said, uh, when we had the trainers here, they said, even though you only have 2,073, uh, population, you have the issues of a city that has usually 500 to 600,000 in population.
Yeah.
The other thing is that until you get into our accounting system, as it was or as it is today, it is extremely complex, and when you have all of the government, regulation, state, federal, uh, and pension plans, and, and so many different other things, it is, it is a very complicate, complex system.
One other question. I know we budgeted a certain amount for the training and, and the feedback and all, are we still on target with the budget, or?
We're probably going to have to, uh, put a little bit more money into it, but BSNA has a program that we're taking advantage of, uh, that all of this can be paid over three years.
Not under that, yeah.
Without any interest charges, so, so that's, I mean, we're, we're taking full advantage of that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Lonnie.
Yes, sir.
Y'all have any other questions? I know there's, on the agenda, there is number six under unfinished, do y'all, Lonnie here for anything on the water sewer increase discussion? If not, he's, he's out of here.
I think it was Dwayne we were hoping to hear from, 'cause we had asked for some stuff on the 24th.
I think we're gonna have to.
I wasn't aware of that one.
We'll delay that.
Not that issue, but can I say, just have a?
Sure, absolutely.
Just another minute.
Yeah.
In conversion, we have, we have had some things come to the surface, because we've had to analyze every single thing that we do, so we've made some corrections and made some things better and work better, I think, uh, that should have been done, and just because of the sheer volume, haven't been done in the past. So, there is a positive side also to.
A lot of cleanup.
Yes.
Would you say that you're the IT, that you're, you're the IT person for the, the city right now? You're like the administrator of this system? Who, who's like the, the person that makes the decision rules on things about, uh, access and length of time you can be on the computer and stuff like that?
Essentially, that is me, uh, but I work with, uh, a IT company that we have on contract out of Springdale to, to do that, some of that. Now, we do have to have a disaster plan and so forth for the state auditors that we have to have in place, and that, uh, encompasses a lot of the IT, and, and they audit that when they come, and they also, like, passwords have to be changed periodically, you know? My password has to be changed every 90 days, and, and, uh, the access is limited to who needs to know what, and so on and so forth.
And you work, you work that out with the people that it affects their job?
Essentially, yes. Um, it's just like, uh, on this new system, um, well, like, uh, transit, or any of the department heads, they can go in and see where they are on their budget, and some, print some limited reports that just apply to them.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Lonnie. You can hit the road. Be careful. All right, that brings us up to public comments. First up is Ms. Jane Grinnell.
Hi. I'm here to talk about the parks, uh, the vacated streets becoming paths, and one of the unique things about Eureka is the lack of fencing. You don't see six-foot cedar fences around all of our houses. And my concern is, if we do the paths that are vacant, that are not, that are green spaces, they back up to private property. And that private property, the only way we will be able, the owners of that private property can keep people off, is to put up six-foot cedar fences, put up signs that says no tressing, keep out, trespassing, keep out. In my younger days, when I did stomp about the woods and go down trails, if I saw a patch of daisies, a patch of daffodils, or a patch of blue bonnets, Texas, I would tromp over and see them. There is nothing to stop people who are going down the trails, that is nothing more than a road, than coming onto my property or somebody else's property, unless we start polluting and putting up fences. I would really like for y'all to review parks' plans. We have the Parks Trails map. If any of y'all have done any of these trails, they're in terrible shape, they're rutted, they're not easy to walk on, they're horrible. One happens to be a city street that, well, two happen to be a city street that are not maintained by the city. As a matter of fact, one of my neighbors, Dickie Street, is part of the walking trails. My neighbor, less than two years ago, asked the city to fix it because it was destroying a wall on his property. The city couldn't afford to do it. It is still rutted, it is still not in good shape. We've got this walking trails map, which goes throughout the city, beautiful, and it's very clear as you look through this, keep off people's property, it's on roads, it's on walkways, but nobody's gonna go onto somebody's private property. We've also got the downtown walking map. Oddly enough, on this trails map, Ojo, Dickie, and Vaughn Street are part of the walking trails. Uh, Ojo is my street. I, according to my survey, I own a portion of Ojo. That's how good the surveys are in this town. Um, back in 2003, I went before parks to try to get Palopinto, which y'all just visited, to try to get it vacated. Parks said, no, we may want to put a trail through there. Think of the logic, there are two houses with less than 10 feet between them, put a trail through there? Really? What about our privacy? It's, if somebody comes onto my property, I would be liable for any injuries. I would very much like for y'all to think about that. When you talk about the streets you want to open up for trails, I'm really concerned about putting a trail within five feet of somebody's front door. We don't have to worry about stranger danger, but why are we pushing it? Thank y'all.
Cheryl Willis.
She certainly has a point.
Page.
Lot of emotion there. Um, I'm Cheryl Willis, and I do sit on the Trails Committee, I'm speaking as a, uh, for myself right now. Um, I think there's a lot of misconceptions about trails right now, and, um, a lot of concerns about privacy issues, and, and some of that, you know, might be valid, but I would urge you to remember that trails go in all over the nation, and they have been found to be extremely successful, and almost all the worries that people have disappear once the trails go in. Yeah, there are some trails that have not been maintained. The future of this master plan is to acquire funding to fund the trails, but it's impossible to get that funding if we don't have the city council behind us. And the benefits to the community are astounding. Um, privacy concerns. Right now, we have a lot of city streets that are city-owned. I would like you to remember that the citizens of this city own that, there are property rights concerned with the people, the whole people of this town, not just one or two people who live next to a city street that has been undeveloped. Um, it would, to me, not taking into account future potential uses would be like not thinking about how we're going to improve our highway in the future so that we don't have further problems, or so that we couldn't have a better life here. Um, privacy concerns are a concern to the Trails Committee as well. We are trying everything we can to find routes around and away from homes. We do not want to come close to a home. We only are going to do that if there's no other option, if we can't trade property, if we can't go around the property, if we don't have other city-owned property to use. We cannot rely on the goodwill of citizens to give up their property for another route around. That would be wonderful if we could, but obviously, even the property that we own is in jeopardy. I'm begging you to think about the precedence that we set here. This woman stood here, and I talked with her two days ago. When she stopped by my table, I've started a petition, and I have over 150 people, just me, in a few hours this week, saying they do not want to see Rock Street vacated, that they love trails and want trails. And they're all very respectful people. They're people of this community, some were tourists, a lot are from here. The few that didn't sign were concerned about business relationships. They still wanted the trail, but they couldn't sign because they were afraid. I'm very concerned about that. I'm concerned that we're going to give away property that all of us have and own, and we, we have a purpose for it. What if we, you know, when I live on East Mountain, what if I said I want to stop, you know, vacate that, and stop cars from going past me just because it's an infringement on my privacy? Let's think about that, please.
Thank you. Melissa Green. Please go. Melissa Green.
Good evening, Melissa Green. 17 Bridge Street. As Ms. Garrel brought up, we do have a walking trail through town. It's our streets and our roads, and they're lovely, and, and I love having tourists come on them. They can connect up with the trails on the outer side of the city where people don't live. But she talks about privacy. It is privacy. We're not monkeys in a theme park. We want to go home, after we punch the clock here, we want to go home to our private areas. We don't mind people walking on our streets. I enjoy people walking on our streets. It's a lovely town. That's our trails. We can have our trails outside of town, we can use our roads to connect with them. Um, I'm here tonight because of the BRICS. I would like to see respectfully that you people consider reclaiming to the city. That's not vacating, it's reclaiming, so that you, the BRICS can have the time to negotiate with their neighbors and get that settled. But next, I want to talk about privacy, and I'm going to talk about that petition. That petition, I was really angry about it, because it was made on a lot of speculations, a lot of false misinformation, and threats. I can go up to Hartz, I polled my neighbors in my neighborhood, and not one neighbor that I talked to said, I want a trail coming through my property. They don't. So I could go up to Hartz and say, hey, do you want to be a monkey in a theme park? And I could get a ton of, ton of, don't laugh, I can get a ton of signatures. So, that being said, I think we need to work on our roads, and we can connect and, and make those trails. I'd be happy to work with that. And then on a lighter note, today, we broke ground on our dog park. There was about 60 people there, and I'd like to say, this young couple over here, who came into town in less than a year, brought us that, and I'd like to personally thank them and the other members of the Dog Park Committee who worked really hard to bring us this. Thank you.
Oof, oof. Rachel? You're up.
I am Rachel Bricks, and my husband is Ryan, and we live at One Magnetic. I can't help but question the timing of the sudden urgency of in-town trails. I invited Director Levine to my home in the summer of 2012, and when pressed, Bruce said the trail would be through our yard and halfway around our property's perimeter, which really surprised and confused me. Come to find out, this alternative was discussed with the previous owner. However, we don't feel we should be held to casual conversations with previous owners. Now, in January of 2013, the Parks Commissioners conducted a site visit, and a lot of random ideas were mentioned. They brought an unseated commissioner, why I don't know, but it was he who casually suggested a privacy fence. Simply put, I never declined any negotiation, as there has never been an offer of negotiation from the Parks Commission, and as I stand before you today, more than a year later, I still do not know what their plans are through our property. At the November 12th planning meeting, Chair Featherstone stated Parks vacates when it is, quote, "within reason and makes sense," which is the case with McCune that runs right in front of his house, end quote. If that is so, why is ours different? Statutes for vacating exist for a reason, and our driveway is a prime example. I must also state that I have been a Parks Commissioner for the past 18 months. Not once has trails been on our agenda. Furthermore, the Commission has not seen any drafts, any timelines, or any implementation goals. No one from the Trails Committee has come to any of our meetings, 18 months. Moreover, I was on the Trails Committee for five months last year. The Trails Master Plan, lack of seriousness just one year ago, is evident by the plan itself. Here was the plan at the time, and to my knowledge, there is not one that exists. Blah, 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 is the Trails Plan. Further back in the plan, where it says overall trail plan, you have a paragraph of question marks. Now, all of a sudden, at the last council meeting, our driveway is, quote, "a linchpin, a backbone, and a spine." Of a Trails Plan we have not seen? Lack of planning and foresight should not now become the burden of our citizens, property owners, and taxpayers. We still don't have a master plan, and meanwhile, the citizens remain in the dark as to whether or not, potentially, hundreds of thousands of tourists will now be in their front or backyards, or maybe even worse, on their driveways. And trespassing isn't just a remote possibility, it's a certainty, because Mr. Levine was up here in front of you folks in January, and I quote, he, excuse me, he addressed the issues of trespassing about the whole Facebook fiasco in a shockingly cavalier and irresponsible way by saying, quote, "When we put our master plan in place, we are going to put a disclaimer there that none of these trails have been surveyed, or are laid out to the degree that we would be comfortable that anybody wouldn't be trespassing," end quote. Ultimately, this is out of control, with rogue trail building, flagrant trespassing, numerous vacation requests from concerned citizens, and empty promises of a master plan that is still not finished. And then it has to go to planning, has to go to the public, and then has to come to you folks for approval. I speak for many citizens when I say, we want to know what Parks is planning in, around, and through our properties, and how it will affect our property values, insurance, privacy, and safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Mr. Jenkburn.
Well, I'm here not to talk about any of that other stuff. I'm Jack Byrne. I have maintained properties in Eureka Springs for 30 years. I've had the privilege of being able to dispose of yard waste in this town on a private piece of property for the last two years, and they have requested that I not drop yard waste there anymore. I called, I went out to see Duane at Public Works and left a message for him to call me to see where we could go. The mayor called me and said that there wasn't anything that they could do. My problem is, you have the ability to take yard waste on Wednesdays, provided there is no honeysuckle, ivy, or bamboo in it. That's one day a week. I work five days a week. There were at least 11 people using this site where I was dropping my yard waste. There are at least four people that I know that work Spring Street, that clean yards, that has yard waste, that haul, tries to find out someplace to haul. I've talked to three of them, and they don't have any place to dump. So consequently, what I've been told is, the city will pick up once a month. So what I can do on Spring Street is start bagging every week and put the bags out front. And then you, the city, will have to decide when you can come pick them up. But I think we, as a city, we used to be able to dump behind the recycle center. But then, once you brought the manure into the chipper, the EPA rules came in, and then all the dumping stopped. And this has been going on for 20 years. This is not a new thing. We've all worked around for 20 years trying to figure out where to dump yard waste. And you can't, every yard that I've ever worked in, in the 30 years and I've been in, almost every single yard, has ivy and honeysuckle. Bamboo is the new one. So you can say we can't dump it, but we still have it. So it's futile for us to say, "Well, just try to find someplace to dump it", you know, because the, you know, you're going to just be dumping it anywhere. And people are just going to have to pull off the road and just dump it. And that's illegal also. It's not legal to dump. Berryville has the same problem. Because I had to bring, from Community First Bank, the waste from there, I had to bring over here to dump because they had no place to dump. So you can't put it in a trash bag and have it hauled away because the trash won't take it. So I think you all need to really work hard and figure out what we're going to do with this stuff. Because this week, I'm starting to bag, and I'll be calling Public Works to pick it up. And when they pick it up, that's fine. But I go through five truckloads a week. You know, that's a lot of stuff that's going to start building up on Spring Street. So I wish you would try to address this quickly. It's been going on way too long, and I thank you for your time.
That'll do for public comments. Next is, finish business.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I need a legal thing here. I want to bring back an issue that I wasn't here for, that I had put on the agenda, and I can't remember if it has to be at the very next meeting, which would be this one, or can I put it on the agenda at this meeting for the next one?
Is it an issue that was taken up at the last meeting and voted on?
Yes.
It would have to be on this one.
Okay, then I would, I was thinking the next meeting to give people a heads up. Then I would need to add that under old business, last one? If we could? The issue on Susie Allen? Neither of us were there for it.
What's the council say? You all have to vote on it.
See, I thought it was going to be the next meeting. I can say it tonight, just said it.
I would second that because I would like to have another vote on it.
Mr. McLean.
We're already passed it. I mean, you know, the agenda's set, let's go.
Nothing passed, and neither of us were there. Nobody could come to a conclusion.
No, 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 we passed the agenda for tonight, it's done.
And what did I just say? I thought I could do, put it on the agenda for the next one as long as I did it tonight. That's why I asked for a legal opinion.
Okay. Let's poll the council. We're going to do a real call vote on it.
Could somebody tell me exactly what we'd be voting on then?
I would like to add a rediscussion of the Susie Allen water flooding thing because neither of us were here, and I put it on.
Stand by.
Terry McLung.
Should I vote yes or no?
Just adding to the agenda.
I mean, I'm really, huh? No.
T. Perkypile.
Yes, I want to discuss it.
James DeVito.
No.
Joyce Eller.
Yes.
Mickey Schneider.
Yes.
David Mitchell.
No, agenda setting's over.
3-3.
Okay, it looks like it waits till the next time then.
It dies.
If it doesn't go on this time, it can't go.
Yeah, it's got to be this time. That's what I was asking him. I thought I could add it to the agenda.
So it's up to you.
Okay, well, then, let me ask a question. Was anything decided at the last meeting about this issue?
There were two votes taken. First vote was to take no action.
To deny.
To deny any award. That failed. Then there was a second vote taken to compensate, and that vote failed. So neither side had sufficient votes to accomplish anything. So at that point, it simply moved on to the next item with no more motions being made on the table.
What was the vote on the no action taken?
The first vote was a motion to grant payment of the invoice. It failed 3-2. McLung and Mitchell voting no. I apologize, the first vote. Made a motion to deny the claim based on the city having toward immunity. That motion failed 2-3-0 with Mr. Perkypile, Ms. Eller, and Mr. DeVito voting no. Then Mr. Perkypile made a motion to grant payment of the invoice Ms. Allen brought forward. That motion failed 3-2-0 with Mr. McLung and Mr. Mitchell voting no. Just, there weren't enough people, really, to.
Okay.
And then there was no further action, no one made a motion to table or anything else.
Okay, so two times it failed. One to take no action, one not to pay. Is that correct?
One to deny and one to pay.
Okay, then my answer's no.
Is this something I can put on the agenda for the next time or no?
It's my understanding, and I stand to be corrected if you want to show me a different rule, but I believe no. I believe it is now been answered.
Okay. Number one, the discussion ordinance 2206, second read.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Floor is open. Mr. DeVito.
I'd move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2206 on its second reading by title only.
Stand by for roll call.
Mr. Perkypile.
Uh, yes.
Ms. Eller.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. McLung.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Or Schneider.
Yes.
Ordinance 2206 and ordinance releasing, vacating, and abandoning part of the unopened portion of Hartman Street and McCune Street in the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
Mr. Perkypile.
Like, make a motion to approve ordinance number 2206 on its second reading.
Second.
All in favor, Sarah. Are you opposed? Okay. This is on to... The number three and under, new business have been moved up to number two to replace number two. Is that correct?
Well, it's to go in front of.
Before.
Before, okay.
Motion to discuss.
Some of it.
Second.
Yeah. Yeah, let's just trade places here. All right, motion to discuss, let's do it the round way, so the record will reflect it.
And I seconded that.
Yes, okay. Floor is open. Ms. Schneider.
As we've been going through this whole thing in regards to the street, the dotted street, the driveway, whatever, which is now being called Rock Street, I've brought up a couple of times now that due to the varying discrepancies in the surveys, which is a normal, typical Eureka thing, the surveys are not agreeing. One says the city owns it, one says the property owns it, another property is involved for a variety of reasons. When you dig through everything that's been going on for over a year, you get down to the bottom line, who the hell owns it? Do we or do we not own it? Now, my concern is, if we take action, assuming that the city owns the property, we could be in a world of financial hurt. My proposal, that I wanted to give a month ago for people to research and think about, is to have a judicial land expert review the various surveys and documents and then give an expert opinion on who actually owns the property. Both parties involved would have, not counting the city, would have to agree ahead of time to accept that expert land opinion and to act accordingly from there. If we move now and vacate, which is what it looks like, if we vacate and it turns out we don't own that property, we're in trouble. The way these surveys are being, are reading and stuff, the way the paperwork is and everything else, I don't see that there should be a problem getting an expert opinion who can look at all the documents and say, "In my legal expert opinion, so-and-so owns the property." This covers us, any action we take from that point on. If 20 years down the road, it's proven we're wrong, we are not in trouble because we have gone and done as much as we possibly can. Everybody is covered. It ends everything. There is no more battle, there is no having to take signs and friendships and everything else is done. A legal expert land person. That's my proposal.
It shouldn't be. Nobody's saying the city owns the property.
How can we vacate if we don't own it?
We have an easement.
Same thing, okay. All right, let me correct my words. Whether we own it or lease it for an easement, I don't care. We're trying to claim proprietorship.
Mr. Perkypile, you had your hand up next.
Well, I was going to ask, Mayor, Ms. Schneider, who do you propose pay for said services?
We're talking $600 to $700 for just a legal opinion. Well, let's put it this way, the person I know, the only person that I personally know of, and maybe our city attorney or someone else can come up with somebody that I, I'm the, the only one I know is Judge Ohm, and he is a judicial land expert. And he has done a lot of work for the city before on these kind of situations, and it would be about $600 to $700. That part's negotiable, whether we would split it between the two parties and the city, just the two parties, however you want to work, that part is negotiable. I'm not concerned right now about $600 or $700. I'm concerned about the city and losing its pants.
Can I follow up on that, Mayor? I'm just concerned also that for $600 or $700, you don't get much for your money. I mean, that sounds, that sounds great, you know, it's cheap, but if you want a legal opinion, that, you know, that's probably just a couple of hours for a lawyer, you know.
You'd rather go through court? Is that what you're trying to say?
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I think it would be more, there'd be more expense than that.
Judge Ohm has done really good by the city. And like I said, he is a judicial land expert. Court is like 15,000.
Next, Ms. Eller, I think you had your hand up next.
The two people that are in contention as to who owns this land is the Park District and the city, right? And we have an ordinance to take the land back from the Park District and the city take control of it. Is that where we are now with this?
Yes.
Correct.
I, so I understood, because we have an ordinance, okay. So that ordinance, well, I don't know, it's had a couple of readings. If we approve that ordinance, then we assume ownership of that piece of property, right?
Control.
Yeah, okay. Then, then what would the decision be if we own it?
The problem is, it's under Parks purview right now, but do they or us actually have it, or does it belong to the property owner? That's the base of the whole problem.
Well, it doesn't belong to the property owner because it's plotted as a street, right?
So it says one survey.
I'm just getting thoroughly confused here. I don't know what it is.
One survey says it belongs to them, another survey says it doesn't. That's the problem.
Here, Mr. Mitchell.
Show me that survey.
Mr. Mitchell, you have the floor.
I think I'd like to hear from...